All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, December 20, 2021, meeting of the Merrimack Village District Board of Commissioners. A public participation this evening will be offered in person and by webinar. You may join the webinar by going to the MBDwater.org website and downloading the agenda for today's meeting, December 20th. Or you can call 646-876-9923 and enter webinar ID 838-8871-1100. As a courtesy, Merrimack TV is also recording the meeting and be posted on their website at a later date. And we are conducting this meeting virtually due to the increase in COVID cases, hospitalizations and everything else. So we felt that it was appropriate to go back to a virtual, a virtual meeting. So that being said, I will reconvene the meeting at time is it? It's 5:08 PM, December 20th. And we can all rise to salute the flag, the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag. All right, great. So we'll do a roll call here since we are all virtual tonight. We just asked the commissioners to indicate where they're zooming in from. We'll start with myself, Don Preventer, at my home, Six Warsman Heights, Merrimack. Wolf?
At my home, Four Conservation Drive in Merrimack.
John?
My home, 25 Windsor Drive.
And Paul?
I'm at my home at 326 Babuuk Lake Road.
Great. We got three staff, Michelle, Ron and Jill from the MBD office. And we got Amanda, our recording secretary, virtually as well. And Ken Ayers, Commissioner Ken Ayers has been excused for this evening's meeting. So with that, we can get started with the finance and human resources review with Michelle Holton.
Okay. With the end of November, we are 41.67% through the year. For current year income, we were coming in at 2.17 million and expenses at 1.53 million with a net ordinary income of $637,000 compared to last year, coming in at $422,000 net ordinary income for an increase of over $215,000. Our revenues for this year are at 48.56% of the total year budget compared to last year, at the same time being 44.6%. Expenses for both years actually came in at 34.3%. So even though line by line, there were obviously various differences, but overall, as a percentage of budget, we're at the, we're at the same place.
Michelle?
Yes.
I wanted to ask you a quick question or maybe make a comment. Is it safe to say that normally with, you know, we have planned for well seven and eight to treatment plant PFAS treatment plant addition, I should say, to be completed by September, right? And our debt service would have started in October, right?
No, the all treatment plants related to the petition warrant articles that we're, we're getting the grants and loans on, they're being treated as one project. So the first payment due will not be until a year from substantial completion of the well two in ostensibly nine coming online.
Okay. I'm sorry.
When two and, when two and nine hits substantial completion, one year from then is when the, the loans for both sets of plants will come due. So that won't be until a year from most likely the end of, we're thinking fall for two and nine. So a year from fall 2022, so it'd be fall 2023 when our first payment is due. The payment we have coming up now is Turkey Hill. First payment will be due in January. And I'm actually, I had just been in touch with DES to get the payment schedules and accounting is working on it. And they said we should have them this week.
Thank you.
So looking at the income budget versus actual report, page one. All of our revenue lines are coming in well above the percentage of the total budget at this point in the year, except for a few that we have mentioned before. Obviously, we know that interest rates are most definitely not where they have been in the past. So we are off there with account 40405. Account 40410, we are currently reviewing why we're off there. We don't know if some of the charges may, maybe being quoted differently under miscellaneous service charge. So we're going to look into that. And then Backflow 40412, while we are back on our schedule for Backflow, most of the testing happens the second half of the year. So we are actually fairly close to where we've, we've been in the past there. And all things continuing to hopefully turn around in the right direction will we'll see that come through as it has in the past. Entrances 40413, that's a timing issue. We, we look at any entrance projects that we think may be coming on and put them in there. But obviously, construction changes quite often. So sometimes that can be pushed around throughout the year and even into other, other fiscal years. So we usually do a conservative budget.
I had a question on that. Does, are these entrance service charges for entrances? Is that something like the, the flex buildings for the flatly development and then the two extra buildings that Gilbert Crossing are going in there? Are those, I'm assuming those have not been paid yet, those entrance fees? Are those something that they're, they're going to be paying? The new developments?
Yes. And so, so far, no, we haven't seen those. This would be both the entrance and also the SDC charge.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Yep. So those pieces will come on. I don't know if we have any tentative dates. Contractors?
As far as Gilbert Crossing goes?
That's pretty early.
Yeah, we haven't even received the updated, some updated numbers yet. So we're still waiting on, I believe we're still waiting on that. Let me rephrase that.
Blood's on its way though, right?
Old blood should be on its way. For the, for the mainline extension fees, yes. They actually haven't built any, built any homes out there yet. So that'll come as they build. So typically, like the way old blood works, for the Ten Haves developments, he'll, he'll sell off the lots and as the lots are completed, they come in one by one for the entrance fees and the SDC charges. But the mainline extension fees are all, will all be paid up before those okay, start moving forward.
All right, that's good. Carry on. I just wanted to confirm if those have been paid yet. So there's a lot still coming in is what my point is, you know? That number's low, but we're going to probably get a lot of fees coming in in the near future or when these new developments start coming online.
Yes. Okay. So does anyone have any questions on any particular income line items? Okay. Then looking at expenses, the next page, we've touched on previously account 50202, the field staff overtime, we have had multiple main breaks. So that's where we've had a bit, a bit more overtime at this point than anticipated. The next page, account 60300, also, and I, we've mentioned the purchase of water. We are over there. I am going to get together with Ron to see as far as going forward, the additional bills that we're going to be getting from Pennachuck, how we want to track if we want to keep them here through the year and then decide how we're handling either reimbursement from capital reserves.
I think we wanted to track it separate.
I didn't want to track it separate.
If we get a grantor or anything like that, that could be able to do an easy.
So if, okay, yeah, we can look at, we'll look at how we want to do that. So far, those, the purchase of water bills are in this line item. Account 70020, that's just an oddity that we had, we received a credit before we received the invoice and it straightens out in the month of December.
Can I just have a quick question on the purchase water? What rate are we being charged at this point? Have we got the emergency rate approved or no?
The emergency rate is approved. The special contract is the, the last thing. And I think there's an email in the packet. Was that in there? For the Pennachuck that shows the conversation between Carrie and Marcia, who is their attorney, saying that this is still, because Carrie thought we were all done and we thought we were all done. But then Marcia came back and said the PUC still has to approve the contract. So we're waiting on that.
What was the rate, what did rate come in at?
67 cents.
All right, great. Thank you.
Sure. I'm going to count 70750, R and M Watershed. We have now wrapped up the rekeying and, and padlocks project that totaled 2750. And we also purchased a a blower for maintenance of the watershed areas. And that was $450 in pipe setting for Greens Pond was $780. So that's the breakout on that line item. Page three postage, we had an extra mailing. Account 80100 and then our debt service 90200 and 90300 are both just timing issues of when the payments are due. Got any one of questions on particular expense line items? And the bank balances, which is the last page of the packet. TD Bank is actually coming out tomorrow to go over some fraud protection options, which I will review with, with Ron and Jill. Even though interest rates are what they, are what they are right now. And then we have some hesitation to take on more bank fees, but with the climate, with cybersecurity and fraud just being rampant, there are a couple of programs that we have been talking with TD about adding on to our services to protect, protect us from, from fraud, even though ultimately if we had an issue, we can recoup, but just the, the timing and the inconvenience that it can put on, on the district would be extensive. So we're going to see what they, what they've come together with options for us tomorrow. And the 10102 account, the Wells 405 treatment funding and 10170 for the treatment 237 and 8 projects, water treatment plants. Both of those accounts have funds that are due back to the operating. So we are going to be doing a reconciliation there to reimburse the operating account. Some, some invoices were paid before we had the funding in place. We, so we paid them through operating as well as some expenses that were reimbursed that also had originally been paid out of operating and the refund was just put into some of the project accounts to help with covering invoices while we're getting set up with, with DES in our payment process. Does anyone have any questions on any of the bank accounts? Bank balances? Okay.
I did notice on 50013, treasurer position, looks like it's less, well, no, it's actually budgeted correctly. I'm sorry, but any still no, this is still vacant as far as having someone appointed to that position?
Correct. We have two potential candidates. We're going to circle back with this week and then do a repost, kind of refresh the postings that are, that are out there. We're going to kind of try to reword the posting to more effectively convey the true nature of the job. But in the interim, we've been able to work things out with Kathy still continuing on as treasurer, as treasurer.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have questions? If not, I guess we can probably move along to Jamie's reports on various things. Everybody good to move on? All right, great. Amy?
How's everybody? Good. Excellent.
So just for the record, commissioners, project updates from Jamie Emery at Emery and Garrett Groundwater.
Sounds good. I, if it's okay with you, I'm going to leave well nine to the end and just, and do the others quickly.
Okay.
So I'll take the 70 Wilson Road update. We're out there drilling actually today. So today and tomorrow and Wednesday, we'll be drilling those test wells. I think we're drilling two at that site. So I'll have more information about that later, but I just want you to know that's ongoing. The salt mitigation, we had a meeting with Fidelity last Thursday that I thought went really well. Kind of the summary of that is the they've decided, they've indicated that they would be treating 70% less surface area lots again this year as they had last year. They're still working with, with advisors, Phil Sexton, on submitting a full mitigation plan in March. Their mitigation plan is going to be something that we all will want to review in good detail. They're going to use the data they collect this winter to put it into their full scale mitigation plan. They now have heated walkways in front of Sparta Way. They also plan on completing a heated walkway in front of two contra way. They, so they are moving towards, to a certain extent, putting as many heated walkways as they can, but it'll be limited. I mean, it won't be everything. They had intended to install cameras that would track the salt use and weather in their salted areas, but the equipment that they got was broken when it was received. So they've reordered, but they have had very detailed meetings with their sustainability group, their consultant and their contractor who applies the salt. So he felt that they were pretty much on task in terms of moving forward with the goals we had. They did affirm that they're going to be closely monitoring the salt that they use, tracking it each storm, which is a big plus because right now they don't do that. They plan on using a non-salt product brine at all of, or they are, yeah, at all their entrance features. So a non-salt brine within some of the heavier areas in the, in their walkways. They still indicated they're planning on going salt free by 2024. That's their goal. If that's possible, that would be a big win for all of us. We did discuss the signage and agreed that once, and if we get the grant, which we haven't heard yet. But if we get the grant, as you recall, we put in a grant for putting in as many signs as we could for the money that we, I think we applied for 40,000. That was partially a match from the MBD that we would work out the final signage with them at the very end, once we got that money from the governor's council. One of the things that was good to hear is all their snow applicators now are Snow Pro certified. That's a big plus, as well as their consultants. And all their contractors now must go through this ISO training 14,000 series, which is one of the more rigorous environmental training programs that kind of indicates to them, you know, everybody's on the same page that their goal is to be more environmentally sensitive and responsive in the community. So I thought that was great. And they said lastly, they were checking with the, the question was brought up as to whether they could jump online in a public forum and state that they were supporting the MBD and their no salt policies. And they did indicate that they were speaking with their government affairs person at a corporate level. So I think we got, you know, I felt pretty comfortable that, you know, they've been working on it. They've taken this seriously and they continue to want to move in the right direction. And I think we were very timely and trying to keep our presentations in front of them before the salt came and, you know, before the snow came rather. And so they've, they've stated this is their goal. They want to, they want to work with us. They want to get away from salt. They want to reduce salt. And they're training and they've got the, you know, the people that are supporting them to do that. So I thought that was all good.
Yeah, sounds positive. Definitely, they're definitely hearing us. It's great.
Yeah. 100%. And I don't know, Jill or Jill, if you had any other, or Ron, do you have any other input on that?
Um, just for me that, I forget what his title is, Jamie. Was it, is it Phil Sexton? That's the environmental engineer specializing in sustainability?
Yes.
So he was, he's one of the ones that he's, that he's working with, but oh God, I can't think of the guy's name that, oh Chuck. Do you have his title? Because he was like somewhere along those lines.
He's a sustainability manager, yeah.
Right. Okay. So he's working with this Phil Sexton. So this is, this is a huge project for them. It's not just something that because we said, hey, we're having a problem with our, our wells, they're looking at this in a huge picture and not just salt, but I think all of their practices in general.
Yeah. No, definitely. This is a corporate, now this is a corporate initiative that's focused on, I think the pilot test is for Merrimack.
Yeah.
You're changing corporate culture. Congratulations. I think that's good. That's all I had on that.
Jamie, did you mention that this, the sustainability report they have is online?
No, I did not mention that.
Did they actually encourage us to go on and, and take a look at it? It's fidelity.com?
I think, it wasn't the report, wasn't it their, their plan going forward?
Well, that mitigation plan is going to be prepared in March. That, that's, that's not, that's not been prepared yet. I asked specifically and he said he's working on that, but they want to use the data they're collecting and the monitoring and the tracking to put in the medications and see how well it's working. So.
Yeah, I think that what's online.
They have, but unless I'm referring it to the wrong thing, they had a sustainability report, I believe, that encompasses everything, not just salt, it was everything that they're, they've been working on.
There is a corporate, yeah, corporate sustainability that's more broad based than what we're dealing with. And so, yeah. But I think all in all, it's, it, you know, I'm encouraged. So I would, I think we all should be encouraged by it. And the last thing on Mitchell Woods update, we are still trying to get a dead timeframe from Barry Miller. Things have been just challenging, but he has, he has told us we will be able to pump test that in January. So we'll continue to bang his drum. That still gives us enough time to get this in. It's pushing us kind of closer to the best, but that's, that's the game right now is to do the testing in January, sometime in January.
Are you testing the eight inch well?
Yeah, the production well.
Okay.
Yep. And then if I could share my screen, you may have to give it up. Jill?
You're a panelist. You should be able to share.
Okay. Let's see, let's see it here. I don't know why it's not coming up.
All right. It just made you a co-host. So we just got to remember to turn that off.
There we go. Can you see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to run through a series of slides. I'm not going to take a lot of time. But this is a complicated, extremely challenging pumping test to digest and to compile. And we are making progress on it. I just wanted to come terms with a few things here. So with MBD9, if you recall, this is, I might just make this full scale here. You see that? You see my full scales picture slide?
Yeah.
Okay.
Got it.
So nine, this is well nine, as you know, this is a 400 protective radius. We have everything here, but this little sliver that'll end up being surveyed in, these are the monitoring wells. It goes beyond this view, but I'm going to talk about some of these. You know, as we go along, the one real sensitive area is this vernal pool that's up here in nine, where we call mine P1. This is the wetlands and this is the stream. So it's just a little broader view. It takes us all the way up past MBD2. This is the preliminary, currently the preliminary zone of contribution, which we have more work to do on that, but give you a sense of that. So we're not getting too close to well number three. Just want to give you a sense of all these tables. And I know you can't see all this data, but we have 30, approximately 30 monitoring locations. And in these, we're, we're having, you know, put in on the ground elevation, surface elevations, depths and so forth. This is the well and there's a fair amount of data that we've collected that we've compiled. That's, that's compiled. Here's the table that you can see, I think, which shows that, you know, we pumped MBD9 and MBD2 at the same time. MBD2, we pumped for 15 days from not, from the 12th of September to the 27th. The test duration was 361 hours. We pumped at an average rate of 1,050. We took out 22 million gallons during that pump test period. We used about 8.7% of the available drawdown and this final specific capacity of well number two was 170. Likewise, we pumped well nine for six days. And just so you know, we started the pumping of MBD2 three days prior to pumping MBD6 or nine. And we pumped nine for six days and we continued to pump for a week or so more beyond when we, well, two, after we shut down well nine, pumped in 1,000 gallons, 8 million, 8.6 million. So we pumped took out of the ground over 30 million gallons of water during that testing period. Had a final water level drawdown of about seven feet, which is very small. We still have a 50 feet of available drawdown and 14% was used with a specific capacity of 140. And I think I've talked, spoken to you before, if we get a specific passy over 30, we're really excited about those wells. These two wells are just off the charts amazing. This is the data that I'm not going to go into, but this is data we're working through right now, which is, shoot, I don't know what happened there. That, that we're working through, which deals with water levels and projections of water levels for everything here that defines zones of contribution and so forth. I just wanted to let you know that this is something we're crunching through still as we speak. Uh, I just wanted to let you know that this is something we're crunching through still as we speak. Uh, the water chemistry, I'm just gonna quickly show you that the, you know, this is field chemistry. Uh, more importantly, iron stayed low throughout. We didn't have any real um trends here. Hardness stayed essentially the same. PH is around six um at the end, which is pretty, pretty common. I mean, MBD six, uh, MBD two is around six. Um, what I wanted to show you is that the how unbelievably good this water quality remained after the entirety of the pumping test. So as you can see, here's a different sampling date, starting on nine fifteen, going to nine twenty. Uh, iron, as I said, you know, actually improved. Magnets remain extremely low. Arsenic was uh, you know, low. PH ranged around six, which we expected. Chloride stayed around the sixty to seventy uh range, uh, which is the best chloro, you know, that's that's excellent. Sodium stayed low around forty to forty-two hardness. We know no nitrate whatsoever, which is significant in that we're not seeing any kind of influence from septic systems or anything out there. Um, total dissolved salts low going to the PFAS. Um, you know, we have twenty-three PFOWA twenty-seven for PFAS and generally non-detective PFNA and PFHXS. Radiologicals are great. Bacteriologicals were great in the micro particular analysis, which is an indicator of whether the well is directly under the influence of surface water, um, shows a numerical score of zero. So all that's really positive. Um, I'm going through it quickly, but I just wanted to let you know that. The standpoint of comparison with MBD two. Um. The magnesias, you know, both low arsenic, both low chloride, almost the same between MBD two and MBD nine. Uh, sodium, almost the same hardness, you know, those are within the same same with PFHXS PFOWA. Pretty much the same, uh, a little higher in MBD two and PFAS slightly higher. But essentially very similar quality water, uh, which is which is good. The step drawdown test, I think I showed you this a while ago, showed, you know, we started with a five hundred gallon in a well. We went to eleven hundred and we chose a thousand as our pumping test. Uh, this is the water level versus time for MBD dime. You can see when we started the pumping test, we dropped down. And at the end, we started, you know, seeing a stabilization or even a little bit of a rise in water level. Uh, and then the water levels came back uh in in a good shape, uh, you know, some it within seven days afterwards. Water levels were higher than what we started with. So uh, and that was with MBD still pumping. Um, cause MBD can or two continue to pump afterwards. The well for the proxy well for production well two, we are monitoring um twelve twelve two B. You can see this is the point in time when MBD two came online. So you can see the cycling of MBD two on, and then we came on to turn MBD two on for three days in a pump here. And then we turned our well, your well, the new well, MBD nine on. And you can see there was a change water level of about one point eight, one point nine feet. So the interference between pumping well two and well nine simultaneously is is a little under two feet. And then when we shut our MBD nine off, well, two recovered and stabilized. And then when both wells were off, the water level recovered, you know, back very quickly back to pre-pumping water levels. So those are all positive signs, of course. Um. You know, we we're not pumping it during a severe drought period, but um nonetheless, this is encouraging. I wanted to show the map again, cause this is, remember, this is the area that we're sensitive about, which is the vernal pool region. Um, but just as you're going through this, I'm gonna talk about well six uh area here and over in this area twelve six. Um, this this aquifer is highly influenced by water from that from uh Greens Pond. And we see a very, very direct relationship when we release water from Greens Pond to the water level and the act for in the water level in the wells. When we go to nine, MBD nine P one, this is the pismeter that's been drilled right next to the vernal pool, which is the most sensitive of the environmental issues that are there. And you can see that this is a straight, you know, this is a pretty straight line relationship. Uh, there we were encouraged by the fact that we didn't have any impact on this vernal pool at all. Um, you'll see that the surface water station that we established in the vernal pool itself. Um, again, we don't see any impact whatsoever. So that's good news. Um, when I go back down to start looking at some of these wells in the wetlands and so forth, I want you to think about the timeframe that we're taking the data and then I expanded it out to the data that we actually collected. Which, as you know, we postponed and postponed and postponed this test because of rainfall. The rainfall never stopped. And we end up doing this test unfortunately in a bad time period, but we wanted to get to the point of having some more information available to us and, you know, in the time for, you know, by the end of the year. So um this is well twelve six, which if I just go back here, twelve six is this one down here in the southern piece. Um, we have pre-pumping data and when we turn our well on, you know, we see a drop down. And then there's a release from Greens Pond and you can see the water level come come back. Now there's, you know, this is occurring before we pump. It occurs after we pump. But when I look at the time, this time period is from September third, October third to about a month. This time period is from May to October. And you can see, here's the pumping period, right? So that's the impact. If I overlay this on the entire period of record that we have, you know, this is a minor um, you know, minor impact compared to what we see, you know, say in June. And even in October, so we're gonna have to, we probably do have an impact associated with pumping. We're gonna have to sort that out with the DES as to how important or meaningful that impact is. And we're lucky to a certain extent that we did collect data for a long time. Uh, you know, expensive data, but it's it is what it is. That's probably gonna help us in our overall conversations that we have. So that's that's twelve six. Um, if I go back to SW two, SW two is down in this area behind the uh, between uh where the creek comes down through here. And we see, uh, you know, we see changes in the SW two uh before we pump. We do see some impacts. Um, you know, we see a decline when we started, but this is partly the overall decline of the actra because it wasn't any rain occurring. We're gonna have to sort out what actually the impact is. We're not a hundred percent sure, but we can see that even while we were pumping the water level in in the stream came flying up. And this is again part of due to a release from Greens Pond that occurred at the end of the pumping test. Uh, if you look at it from a regional, you know, over the time period from March uh to October, you can see that there were stream flow course that were much lower um than what we what we observed during the pumping test. So one thing we have learned is that the stream is directly in contact with the the actra. We knew that. Uh, but is uh, you know, we were able to do a little testing to demonstrate how closely related it is. Good news is that in some ways we can control it by releasing water from Greens Pond. And that's something we'll have to uh, work through as well. Uh, WP six is this one uh over here in the middle of the wetland. Um. We have, you know, this kind of interesting uh changes in water levels that are not pumping related. Same over here. We've got something here. We're not sure. We don't really believe that this is an impact. And I take it in terms of the old, you know, what I have in order, you know, I have data from two thousand uh from February. We're not a hundred percent sure. Uh, the scale is different, by the way, just it'll be confusing. We're not, we're not really convinced that this is an impact. So we'll have to work again, like you said, through it. Then whoops, the last one, that is the last one. So those are just three or four out of the thirty that we we've gotta work through on this um in this game plan where we're making progress. Uh, I'm guessing that we'll have a report hopefully in February that we can submit for the state to review. That's our goal at this point in time. But that kind of gives you a sense of uh what we've where we're at. Uh, I don't know if you had any other, any questions or you wanna?
Um, I just was wondering when you use the word release from Greens Pond, is that is that a combination of just uh precipitation flowing out of there as well as when they clean out the um? I think there's just like a catch basin cut uh orifice in there, a horizontal rectangle opening. And it gets clogged. I've seen it clogged and then I've seen it cleared out. So somebody goes in there and cleans that out. Is that kind of what you're referring to as releases?
That's exactly what happens is that this is, this is a release of the beaver dam. So the water came out of the uh through Greens Pond and instantaneously had this impact. This is, this is well six right here down in this area. But that water then feeds that whole stream and, you know, and you see that not just in wells in six, but you see it. You know, in the surface water flow, of course, you see it on the on the pismeter in the wetland, it comes up, you know, you see it every everywhere. That Greens Pond influences everything in terms of its releases. And so to clarify, uh, Don, you're right. That's more than just precipitation. That's actually beaver dam, you know, cleaning out the beaver dam.
So if that if that could get mitigated, so there wasn't a an effect of the beaver clogging that up or anything, we'd probably see more of a a subtle change or a a
Right.
Level in the aquifers and wells.
What what we're gonna wanna do is we're gonna wanna use Greens Pond to our advantage and do instantaneous releases so that we do artificially recharge that 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 basin, right? And I think that's gonna be imperative as we move forward, that we are able to manage that that Greens Pond flow.
Right. It'd be interesting. I mean, maybe we can talk about, you know, slightly impounding that that pond a little bit in the and then releasing it in the summer when we need it or something like that.
One hundred percent. Yeah, I definitely wanna try to do that.
Good.
That's it. I don't have any bad news. I don't have, you know, I do think that we're gonna have some some arguments to make uh, with the state about influences on the wetlands, cause we've seen some and on the surface water. But we also know that surface water is dry and that 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 wetland gets dry. So um, it's gonna be uh an interesting, you know, we're gonna have some good dialogues with DES, but I I at the end of the day, I know we're all in the opinion of that we will be able to use this well um for the future. We, you know, I don't know, uh, we we just gotta see how strong we can make every argument.
Yeah, no, that's encouraging. Great. Any other questions for Jamie?
Not for me. Very good. Well, I hope you guys have a Merry Christmas.
Yeah, you too. Thanks for doing all the hard work and um we appreciate you continuing to get that in. And obviously time is of the essence. So I'm sure you understand that. We we appreciate that.
Uh, we are, we're going out of our minds with all the data. We we're we're working hard on it, trust me. But thank you. We will continue to do so. And uh, right now I wanna make sure that Barry does, we don't slip Mitchell Woods off the curve. We we're, we've been banging that drum hard, so we'll get there.
On Mitchell Woods, uh, we are sampling uh PFAS when we do that pump test as well, right?
Correct, yeah. We've already done that, but we're gonna, I I believe we'll pump, yes, we'll we'll do another round.
Right. All right, awesome. Have a good holiday yourself.
Happy holidays, guys. And Jill. And I can't see.
Amanda.
Yeah, see you guys. Thanks. Yeah, oh, I gotta stop share. I'm gonna screw you up. All right, there you go. All right, see ya. Hi, Peter. Bye, Peter.
Great. All right. So next on the agenda, we got um um, project updates from Underwood Engineers. And we got Peter Pittsus and it looks like Lynette's joining us too. How you doing, guys?
Good.
Great.
Yep. So I'll give you um just update on seven and eight. So at the last meeting, we mentioned that the vessels just got set. Um, and then, you know, the contractor was trying to, you know, figure out his schedule and stuff. Uh, since the last meeting, the um, the roof has been installed uh on that section of the building. Um, the staging was set up inside. Uh, he had a sub consultant come in and 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 do that work. Uh, the ceiling has been installed in there. Uh, they have a part of the insulation in there. There's a a foam lower layer than a blown in layer on the top. So the foam is in, uh, the blown in is not in, that will be going in um this week. Uh, the staging is currently being uh dis uh disassembled right now and getting pulled out. Um, the GAC is scheduled for delivery on January tenth. And uh, they are looking to start the vessel up ASAP. And with uh the testing procedures that we have in there and and the time to get samples back and all that, they're looking to be online sometime around mid-February. And this is um, and we were, you know, talking with them about that. And we're not gonna have full SCADA controls and all that kind of stuff of the GAC at that point. That will probably be coming, you know, early March uh when that would get done. So, but they would be able to be treating water. Um, you know, you know, mid-February, so. So that's a nice thing. I think the last last meeting, we were talking about the end of March, that he was um, and then he was, you know, he actually worked, he's been doing a good job getting his subs lined up, like I know he's done. He delayed his subs a lot, you know, with with the delay of the vessel. And now that that's here, you know, you really got everybody lined up and got some good work done the past month. So.
That tank was inspected and everything's okay with it?
Oh, yeah, then I, uh, yeah, then that that tank, uh, we ended up um hiring that company team. And they did come out and um they were able to uh test uh the tank right in place with all the piping that was on it. So when we go to do that again, uh, just before the five-year maintenance bond uh expires, we will be able to do the same exact test because there'll be nothing new in our way. So we'll be able to do that same exact test.
Did you say five-year maintenance bond? For some reason, I thought they had agreed only to two.
I thought it was five, right, Ron?
You know, I believe it is five. I think that's what, I think originally they were saying two, and I think we got them into to the five. I will, uh, actually, I will check on that, Wolf.
Yeah, so we, once the um, so approaching that five-year uh window, you know, we are wanna do, you know, once um the GAC gets changed out, at that point, we would wanna do the inspection at at that time when the vessel's empty.
So we're gonna have to, but I'm assuming the plant's offline now and we're we're, I understand we're doing some maintenance on the green sand vessels and whatnot. And um, so I would think we would need to get the the green sand vessels fired up and at least flushing out to waste or something at some point.
They are currently being uh flushed out the waste on a daily basis just to prevent any kind of bacteria from development. Is that correct, Ron?
I I don't think it's daily. It's every every couple of days for the bacteria in those filters, but um we will be able to even if we're not finished, you know, doing the regens and stuff, we we can still do one filter and put water through those, the the GAs, the yeah, the GAC filters as well. So we we can still operate. All right, plan is to get everything done beforehand.
So so basically all the work that you were doing to the green sand vessels, is is that completed at this time then?
I don't think it's a hundred percent completed. I think there's still a couple of vessels that need to be done, but it should, the goal is to get it done prior to um, media coming.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was just asking to make sure it's kind of on track.
And then there's still is some. And then there, there still is some time in between when the media gets there and when we have to do startup. And we have to wait for samples to come back, so they have, you know, additional time after that to complete it. Um, but they all, you know, the, once, once we do uh start it up and, and we're running. Water through the green sand every couple of days, we're gonna wanna run that same water through. The uh, the new G A C to prevent the bacteria from developing there too, you know, so. And that's one thing that we're gonna have to work on, because right now, um, I believe that the water is uh. Being pumped into the recycle tank and then slowly pumped out of the recycle tank into the infiltration basins. Is that correct, Ron?
I don't believe so. I thought they were going right to the infiltration. I, I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, so that's one thing we're gonna have to work through, because we're gonna um, you know, with, with the G A C. Uh, it does not have a direct line into the recycle basins, so it has a direct line out to the infiltration basins. So we're gonna just have to work with, you know, what we have and, and watch the weather and, and try to prevent those infiltration basins from freezing. You know, as we're pumping water into them, so we're gonna wanna, you know, and it might have to be instead of going every. You know, every couple of days, Ron, maybe we have to go more of every day to make sure we're getting fresh water into those infiltration basins to make sure that there's water in there. You know, and it's somewhat warmer preventing it from freezing.
Yep.
So. Yeah, we are looking to do, and Ron, I was gonna give you a call on this. We are looking to uh set up a meeting uh right after New Year's to do a. Um, a pre-startup meeting to make sure that we have all of our ducks, you know, in line and. Everybody knows what they're doing and we have plans for a lot of different things, so. Um, I'll talk to you tomorrow about setting up a, a date on that, but we are looking. Looking, we, we didn't wanna do it on a Monday, because that would be, you know, right coming back from the holiday. And um, and we wanted to get Wes involved with it too, and he has a bid due on Wednesday, so we're looking at like a Tuesday, Thursday. Uh, one of, one of those two days.
Alright, I just signed up for a class, so what, what are we looking at?
The fourth and the sixth.
Okay.
Alright, anybody have questions on well seven and eight? Okay.
Okay, so then on, on to uh well two. The uh contractor right now has the uh G A C uh block wall completed. And that's really nice. Uh, we've been having, you know, decent weather. Um, so they were able to. Um, just put blankets over those walls compared to having to set up uh, you know, staging and heating the area. So that, you know, the weather was certainly cooperated with them on those. Um, they are gonna be starting to do the uh lower walls, which is the chem room and administration room. And we believe, you know, with the colder weather starting to come in, that's gonna have to be tented and heated. Uh, they have most of the uh concrete slabs completed. The admin um chem uh block walls are scheduled to be completed late January. The trusses on the G A C are gonna be installed late January and on the chem admin area. In uh early uh February with the roofing system installed on all the roofs. Uh by late February, so we will be totally closed in late February and uh able to work. The vessels are scheduled to be uh shipped on January tenth. I think at the last meeting, uh I have mentioned that they were uh, they were scheduled to be shipped on, what is it, the fifteenth of December? And uh, but then a vocal is saying, well, you know. We're gonna ship you two of them then and then to another time, and then, you know, the contractor was going, well, you gotta pay for the extra mold for the, the crane to come, because I have. You know, our contract calls for everything coming at once. So then, you know, they agreed to ship them early January, and if they ship it, or, you know, the uh January tenth. Which is the same day that Wes is getting his G A C, so um. You know, if you're figuring what they had for shipping times and all this kind of stuff, if you figure it was gonna take, you know, a couple of weeks to come in. That lines up nicely when he's gonna be finishing up all of his block walls and all that kind of stuff and getting ready. To put the roofing system on, so all that kind of lines up nicely for him.
So, um. Then and I'm doing all four vessels um at that time, right?
All at the same time, yeah.
So four all at the same time, so he can have the crane just pick and lift all four of them?
Yep, exactly.
Separate trucks.
Exactly, yeah.
Good, good.
Yeah. That'll be good. So right now, um, I think at the last meeting, I mentioned that they had a. Uh substantial completion of uh August twenty-six, twenty-two. And at the meeting before that, I did miss, uh, misspeak and um, the, the substantial completion date was actually uh. August eleventh. I think I told you it was gonna be late June and I, uh, I took them. Um, the early, when I looked at that schedule, I took, I looked at an early date was when they were starting. You know, some of the testing instead of the end, end date, so I misspoke at that point. Currently, now they're looking at September one. Um, as a substantial completion date, and currently the contractual substantial completion date is September eleventh. So. They have been doing decent, but they have fallen slightly behind some of the, you know, some of their schedules and stuff, but. Hopefully they can, you know, pick that up, so. So that's, that's just kind of a, a quick summary of well two work. Oh, and we did, you know, give them, I think we mentioned at the last meeting, we did sign the change order for the well number nine work, so that is. You know, in there, they have stuck, you know, they submitted the shop draw in for the V F D, so that work is, is in the schedule.
Alright, good. Any other questions on uh well two-nine treatment plant?
Up for me.
Alright, sounds good.
And then just a quick one on well number four, the um. The contractor finally finished up his last item for uh the punch list. And um, we submitted a payment request uh, you know, to the district, and I think that that probably got into this. This round of checks and so that um finishes off uh Penta for well four-five project.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we saw that actually just today in the.
Yeah, I think you did, yeah.
Alright, good, so um, I guess while we're on Wells four and five, I know um, there was some breakthrough graphs and some raw water graphs that were. Sent around um by Underwood, so I just thought we kind of wanna look through those and. Um, i- if someone wants to share a screen and just kind of explain what we're looking at and. It, it with the context of um, are we still able to continue and um. Treat the water or be projecting a date when we might wanna look at having a change at media help? You know, that's kind of packing this.
Yeah, yeah, I brought Lynette along because she's been tracking some of that, but we feel um. You know, and jump in Lynette, you know, but um, you know, we looked at it and, you know, your raw water looks, you know, pretty. Stable, you know, on, at the four and five, the one raw water one that, you know, kind of stood out to us is well number two. And that's sort of, you know, in the last, you know, three, we, we don't, the last uh result we have is October. We do not have the November one. So, but the last three that we had, so that would have been July, I mean, uh, sorry, August, September and October. You know, seemed like they were sort of hedging up, you know, so very interested to sort of see what that November one does. Um, the other ones, the other uh supplies sort of have been, you know, it's, it's roughly the same thing. It's kind of, you know, doing it's. You know, up and down motion, but um, yeah, two is, two is uh kind of interesting how that kind of popped up.
I think two peaked out in the last few months, the highest that it's ever been, you know, so it's.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's one, uh, you got actually two tests back in two thousand and sixteen that were just. Slightly uh ahead of that, but it was really, you know, that was right at pretty much the max that it's always been, yeah, whatever.
Really, well, two?
Yeah, you had one somewhere around a thirty-three. Was your highest one, and it looks like that was. I think May of sixteen, if I'm, you know, I think it's May of sixteen was the highest one.
Yeah.
But, you know, but you're only, you're at thirty-one on this one, so it's only, you know. Two below it, you know, so.
Has there been anything different operationally like the last three or four months?
I mean, the only thing I can think of is we did the pump test on well nine, which is in the same, you know, aquifer as well too. That was in September. But.
That could have led to the um, that could have led to the higher one that we saw in October.
Oh, the other thing is we replaced the well pump out there. So I think we're.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're probably pumping, we, until we shut it off, we were probably pumping at a higher rate than we were over the previous few years.
Yeah, I mean, it was slowly going down, but yeah, we're back up to around eleven hundred gallons a minute again, back out of well two. And I think we, before replaced, I wanna say we're right around like nine something, nine hundred and something G P M, so. The pumpage did increase.
Right, it's not a huge difference, but slightly. But typically, I, I think that's kind of what we might see is a trend with. When the more you pump the wells, a lot of times the, the PFAS goes up, the P F O.
Was, was two running at the same time that you were pump testing nine?
It was actually, yeah.
Yeah, I wonder if like the double pumping might have pulled a little more in.
Right.
Yeah, that certainly could have, that would have affected that um, October, the last result that we had, yeah.
Total speculation.
So we shut, we shut well two off in October when we started buying water from Pennachuck, right?
Yeah, what was that date, Don?
Uh, October twentieth.
Twentieth.
October twentieth, okay.
Yep.
So it'd be interesting if we see, are we still sampling monthly? We're still sampling November?
We are, we are. We just haven't got the, any results back yet, but we, we have sampled. We did some system sampling as well, and we haven't received those back, so.
So you're right, I'd be curious to see if, now that we haven't pumped it in November, since October twentieth. Is the level gonna start going back down or not, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, I don't know if you have anything on, I have the couple of files open on my uh computer unless um. Lynette, if you have them there, if you wanna share them or anything.
Um, it's up to you. I've got a bunch of files. Um, if you've got them handy, you're.
Yeah, I guess maybe if we wanna look at um.
Come on, walk through.
Yeah, if you wanna look at some of the raw water graphs, I don't know if you have that file open or a well two that Peter was just talking about real quick.
Yeah, you wanna, you wanna put them up or you want me to?
Um, I can do it if I can share, hold on a minute here.
I was gonna say, I'm not as familiar with Zoom, so.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Yeah, I think Jill has to give you um control, and then you have to give it back before you leave the meeting or you, or everybody else loses it.
I, I don't think anymore, but.
Was it okay?
I'll let down try and see if you can share.
So who, who, whom I?
I get, I get the file open if you want.
Okay.
Yeah, alright.
Okay.
Which one do I want? Let's see that file. Where are we here? That's the one I wanna see.
There it is.
Yep.
See in that graph?
Yep.
Alright, so this. These are the well, so this is well two we're talking about. Yeah, I guess you're right, because over in here it was up around.
Yep.
Thirty-three or something, and now it looks like we're just starting to break the thirty mark over here again, so that's well two. Um, that's the only PFAS that's, looks like it's above any of the M C L.
But you still had your other ones down there, the, the red and the blue. Uh, down in your bottom right-hand corner that are kind of popping up at the same time, you know?
Oh, yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess it's more than just P F O A, so we'll see where that goes from there. Well, three, which I think is offline now, and that's, so that's, that's really, never really broke over the thirty since way back in. You know, twenty sixteen over there, so. So well two is actually higher than well three now, and again, we haven't pumped well three. Well, we were pumping that over the summer, I believe, right, so. I don't know, anyway.
Yes, we were.
Four and four are well five. Uh, well, seven, looks like that's bouncing around the thirty mark.
Yep.
Probably the same thing, well eight, kind of pushing up close to there. So. Alright, um. So I don't know if we wanna get into the uh breakthrough curves at Wells four and five real quick, if um. And I don't know if you, you might be better off sharing that if you can yourself, or you want me to put that up and you can.
Oh, yeah, do you have, do you have it right there since you're already shared?
Yeah, let me see.
Probably be quicker than be figuring out how to share.
Yeah.
Um.
Are you guys looking at that now?
Basically, um, the, the new piece of information as of the October sampling. Is the P F O A broke through the fifty percent port on the lead vessel. So we've been kind of waiting, you know, because we have the ports at twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five. So people had broken through the twenty-five percent port a few months ago. You know, um, and we've been kind of waiting, okay, how long is it gonna take to get to the next, you know, to the fifty percent port, and that finally happened.
Yeah, Lynette, come, Lynette, come closer to your microphone, because you're kind of going in and out.
Move my computer closer. Does that help any?
Yeah.
Alright, I'm not quite sure where my mic is on here, but. Um, so the, I was saying, just saying, P F O A broke, finally broke through in October. The fifty percent port on the lead vessel, so we were able to compare, you know, okay, we've hit fifty percent of the vessel. And it's broken through and we're at, I think, forty-nine percent of our bed life warranty that we have with Evoqua. So that's, it seems to be tracking pretty well.
Right, so this is where, this is what you're talking about right on this graph, I think, right?
Yes, yeah, yep.
And this is the fifty percent uh port, okay, so these other ones that have broken through earlier.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the short chains, some of the short chains have gone through.
Right, right.
Much earlier, and then the other one we've been tracking is kind of the, the, the lead um through, which is your P F B A. That's the first one that comes through, and that was at, with the October sampling, that was at the fifty percent port. On the lag vessel. And so, um, I'm hoping on November, you, you sampled the seventy-five percent port. Um, so we can get some information on that, so we can kind of finish tracking through that, but. Um, that's the, P F B A is the short chain that comes through really fast.
Right.
Oh, you know what, you have the old graphs there. Let, let me, um, maybe I should.
Oh.
The um, the legend, you know how the legend has a box around it?
Yeah.
With a view, it was up too far and it, and some of them got cut off.
Oh, alright, because I was just gonna say, I don't see the um.
Yeah, so.
Could I ask a question about the math on these?
Uh, you can ask and I can try and answer.
So, if it says that at the fifty percent port. That twenty percent of the P F O A has broken through. What level of P F O does that represent?
Well, that includes everything, so that includes your regulated long chains and your short chains. So it's based on whatever the um raw water.
Right.
Sample was.
So if the row was thirty and twenty percent broke through, it'd be at a level of six?
Well, yeah, but your raw water isn't thirty because you're at like thirty on PFOA or forty a lot of times. Uh, you know, so it's total people, you know, so you add up all of your.
So it's all of them.
Then, yeah.
You know, so your tot- your total PFOA coming in, or I'm sorry, your total PFAS coming in might be something in the seventy, eighty range.
So I think right here. Your, it says total PFAS ranges from seventy-five, seven to one sixty-three. So I think they're adding all of the PFAS compounds together.
It's the total, the sum of all of the PFAS. So we're not distinguishing between regulated and non-regulated.
Right.
And we're trying to do also weighted average. So, you know, if you're getting fifty, I mean, sixty percent of your water. From well five and forty percent from well four, then we're doing sixty percent of. The PFAS concentration of well five to forty percent of the PFAS concentration for well four.
So should we be managing, I guess the, the, the basic question I have is should we be managing this from a percentage basis or from an actual? Individual compound, what are the levels at the fifty percent tap?
Well, I mean, the graphs show you both. I mean, we've got, the graphs are tracking at each, each one. I mean, I think.
Okay, so that's the, that's the actual on the left there then, okay.
But Lynette, is, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, on, on this graph here, the top line. Is the per, you know, percent removal. So you're using the scale on the right side. On the graph with the percentages.
Right.
The yellow, blue, red line on the bottom are concentrations and you're using the scale on the left side.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
So, so for example, if we're on this, the lead vessel fifty percent port, which this crap is, so at that point. You've got seventy percent removal of all your PFAS and then when you go to the lower graphs, that tells you what's breaking through. So you've got. You know, PFBA has come through, your PFPEA has already come through because those come through before your PFOA does. And then that, that red line that's just starting to go up there in the October timeframe, that's your regulated compound. So that's the one you really need to.
That's an important note to make, Peter. Thanks for pointing that out. You know, this, this right axis here is really just for all of the PFAS and then these are. The actual PPT concentrations of the individual ones.
Yeah.
All right.
So, I mean, having gone like. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, John.
Oh, I was just gonna follow up with that, like, so if we're at, you know, a level of like four, five on the. PFOA, um, after however many months, like over, over a year, a little over a year.
Yep.
Um, so what, what does that indicate to us in terms of a call to action? Like, how far away are we from being over the limit?
Well, you got to remember, this is on your first vessel too. So you still have your second vessel that's catching anything. So even if, for example. I mean, the way they recommend you operate it is that when you, you start getting breakthrough of your lead vessel. That's when you take that offline, you replace it with new GAC, you move the lag to the lead position. And have the fresh vessel be your, your new lag vessel. It's kind of the, the recommended operational sequence. Um. You, you know, so right now you've been a year to hit the fifty percent mark. So. Is it going to be another twelve months before you see it in the, in the effluent from that vessel? Maybe, maybe it'll be shorter, you know, so.
Yeah.
You know, we're guessing somewhere six to not, six to twelve months, you're looking at replacing that, that first vessel.
So it's not tomorrow. No, right. That, that's why I just kind of wanted to look at these. But this is. The seventy-five percent tap, you're only really seeing these two compounds right now, right?
No, good one. Because the yellow's not, yellow's zero.
Yeah, all right, that's true. So. So it's really just PFBA. And then lead vessel one, that's, that's the discharge of lead vessel one. So it looks like all the PFBA is. Also coming through the lead vessel. Then we get into the lag vessel and it's, um.
Yeah, right now, right now, um.
Just looking at totals.
At the, the seventy-five percent port on the lead vessel. You've, you've only got the PFBA is still the only thing. So from, you know, from. If, if you've got a quarter of the lead vessel plus the whole lag vessel, that all it has in it is PFBA.
Right.
And PF, PEA is the second one and that hasn't, hasn't come through the seventy-five percent port. So it's somewhere between the fifty and seventy-five.
And if you look at, and if you look at the lag vessel at fifty percent. You're also seeing that PFBA. Going through, you know.
Yep, there, that, that light gray line is your PFBA.
So what we.
So that's, the PFBA is really leading everything else, you know, and then, and then your, your. PEA and your HXA are the next two that come through, but they seem to be lagging quite a ways behind. The PFBA and then PFOA is coming through pretty soon after those other two come through. You know, there's not as much of a lag there. Between those.
So, you know, this, this is what we were kind of wondering is what do we do, um. About having true non-detect in our finished water and all that stuff, you know, it looks like PFBA already came through the fifty percent lag vessel. But that's, that, we've already, we're already further, there's already more, another contaminant that has gone through. Both vessels that we're not testing for and that's kind of what I wanted to, um, to put up over here, just so you guys. Let me see if I can put this up in the right place here. So, um, Brandon had done some testing. From DES, Brandon Kernan. Um, and I don't know if you can see all of this, this is, this is, there's a concentration of, uh, uh, PFPRA. So I guess Brandon got some grant or something and the DES is testing. For, is it like eighty compounds, I believe, instead of just the, the thirty or twenty-eight that we test for?
Seventy, um.
Right. I know there was like twice as many or more compounds.
Yeah, because you guys used to be testing for the max, which was thirty-two, I think, and that's all Europe can deal with at the time, I think, but. Yeah, I think seventy on that one. So I was surprised. I was like, wow, that's like double what they.
So what I was trying to, um, what I was trying to show you here is this, this is it right here. Maybe I'll try to zoom in a little. Um, this pentafluropropanolic acid, PFPRA. And this is showing up in basically all of our wells, you know, it's at five point nine and well three. Here's the thing, it's at eight point nine and well four. It's at, um, that was a duplicate sample, eight point nine, so I guess that confirms that value. Well, five, it's at, um, six point eight. And here's a sample of the treated water at wells four and five and it's coming in at seven. So I'm looking at this and I'm saying, all right, well, well, four and five average out to maybe about seven point something if you look at. This eight point nine and this six point eight, that's going into the, this is raw waters, that's going into the vessels. And this is coming out at seven, going on the outlet of the vessels. So this compound is actually ahead of PFBA, right? That, that's what that tells me. Because it's.
Yeah.
Seven.
Yeah.
And again, we're seeing it at well seven and five and well eight, four point two. But that's got a J there. I'm not really sure what that means, um, the estimate, I guess.
Well, it's between, it, it's in between, I can't remember what they call it. There's a, there's a detection limit and a.
Right.
Quantifiable limit or something, so it's. It means they did, they did, they detected it between the detection limit and the quantifiable limit. But the actual number, you know, well, you know, maybe, what's the number that it is, four point two? So maybe the range is. Maybe the detection limit is three and the quantifiable limit is six. So it's somewhere between three and six, but they can't guarantee that it's four point two exactly. It could be four point five, it could be.
Right.
Three point eight, you know, whatever.
So, so when, you know, um, I guess the point I'm making is to make a statement that say. We can't really make a statement that says that we are at non-detect of all PFAS. The, 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 the correct way to say that is all PFAS that we routinely test, I guess, right? So we, we just got to make sure when we communicate to the public that we're not giving a false, you know, message. Um, and, and, you know, we're only testing for seventy of these PFAS. There could be another half a dozen, if we tested for a hundred of them or two hundred of them, you might find other ones out there, so.
There's four thousand in the family.
Right, there's thousands of them, so that's, that's the thing. And we don't know what, you know, the manufacturers are, uh. The users are using, you got a lot of proprietary, um, non-disclosure, you don't have to disclose what you're using. In some cases, trade secrets, so, you know, that's kind of what we're dealing with here. Um, but I think Brandon is going to be sampling these wells again, if he hasn't already, at least wells four and five. And he's also going to sample, um. At this, through a different grant, there were two, there was another sample that was taken actually at, at Loreen Allen's tap at her home. Who, who is on MVD water. And she got a value of forty-two, so I don't know how that happened because it's way higher than it is in our. In our source over here and any of our sources, so. Um, Brandon Kernan, I think, is sampling her tap over again. He's doing some of these wells over, definitely well four and five over again. So we're going to try and see kind of how that all correlates.
And this was done in July, correct?
Um. I think it was, actually, I'm not even sure what the date was on here, to be honest with you. Um, he's got some summarized numbers in here, actually, you know, with the seven. Uh, I don't know if he's got a date on here, but. Yeah, so I just wanted to point everybody's attention that there are some PFAS that we haven't sampled for before. There's one of them that we've, appears to have broken through both vessels and that's going to be confirmed with additional testing. Um, but again, it's, you know, who knows how many of the thousands that are out there. May already have broken through as well, so it's just something that, you know. That exists that we got to, to know about. Basically, my only point of bringing this up, so.
I, you know, my, if my guess is, you know, as time goes on and they start to get, you know, different. Or they're able to, you know, test more of these chemicals, you're going to find additional ones that are doing the same thing.
Right. And I think this PFPRA is a, it's a short compound. I want, I think it's only maybe a three.
It's a three carbon, yeah, I think they're calling them like super short chains or something.
Right, so.
Surprising that it would go even faster than the PFBA, which is a four chain.
Which is kind of what we sort of expected is the short chains that harder to be removed with carbon, basically. So that's, uh, I think that's all I really wanted to, um, to bring up. I, I think we jumped into the next, um. To the next, uh, agenda item, which was to discuss the PFPRA and MBD wells. Um, so I figured since Underwood was on, on the call still, this would be.
Oh, we were planning on staying and talking about that one, yeah.
Right. Uh, so I don't know if anybody else has any questions or wants, wants me to point to anything on the screen. Go ahead, Wolf.
I do, um, we had talked before about the possibility of adding another, um, filtration. Technology resin or zeolite or something like that, right, to, to take care of these short chains. I'm really worried. If we saturate the lag vessel already now with the PFBA and whatever the other one was. It kind of almost renders the lag vessel obsolete, right? If we, if we go by. The short chains versus the regulated compounds, right? So we're basically saturating both vessels right now and.
With the short chain, right.
With the, correct, correct, correct. So at one point, we need to make a decision. How are we dealing with the short chains? Are we, are we going to make them part of our decision to change out the? Media, are we, are we just looking at the regulated MCLs, right? So on that note, have we made any further progress with, um, the, the, um. What was it called? The RSSS rapid scale?
Oh, the pilot test, the pilot testing. Four, five, yeah, so, um.
Right. I haven't heard any discussion about that in a while.
We did go out and meet with, um, Ron and the operator, Brian and everybody, um, kind of talked through like. How we could get the water from here to there and where the columns could go, um, that sort of thing. And, um, XPD is, is going to write up a. Report, you know, with kind of a. Uh, like a conceptual design of what the pilot setup would look like kind of thing.
Yeah.
So that's where we're at with that.
Do we have a time plan when we shoot to have that? Available to us so we can start doing additional testing?
Um, we don't have anything definitive. I can talk to them and see how quickly we can get that out to you.
Might be a good idea to, I don't know, Ron, should we maybe put that as an action item on the action on the tracking list? So. We start talking about that more frequently because it seems like. There, there's another mole to whack, right? Yeah, um. You know, I'd be fine with that. I, I. I know, like Lynette said, we did go out there, but I haven't heard anything back as far as a reporter or anything like that. Um. Are we still planning on running? The media now to. As much as we can to collect data. I thought that's what we were.
Well, that, yeah, that, that brings up a good point because that, the, the discussion was, well, since the rest of our wells aren't treated and the rest of the system has. All kinds of PFAS in it. Then it doesn't make sense to change out the media at well four because we're still going to have PFAS in the distribution system. And even though we're buying water from Pennachuck, we still do have PFAS in the distribution system, but. It's certainly lower than it would have been if we didn't buy water from Pennachuck. But that still kind of holds true. We still do have other PFAS in the distribution system. You know, so I don't know, does it make sense to jump the gun and replace the media at wells four and five? Or, you know, the recommendation was to try to collect more information. On the two filters that we have now at well four and five for all of the PFAS compounds. So, um. I don't know that anything's changed.
If you change out real, like, too quickly, then, yeah, you lose your opportunity to develop some. Historical data that you can make, you know, future decisions on.
Yeah.
But you do, you know, and Wolf hit on it too, you know, are you, are you determining your change out based on? You know, the short chains and if you're doing that, you're, you know, sort of throwing away, you know, you know. Some carbon that has some usefulness to take care of the regulated compounds. So, you know, is your policy to. To, um, meet the regulated compounds or all PFAS and. And it becomes a, a tougher and tougher decision to make because now we're seeing that you went from. Only getting results of thirty-two, you know, chemicals and now you're, you know, up to seventy. And does that go up to a hundred, you know, in a year when they get more technology and, you know, then you just start, you know, it, it. It gets to be a, it's a tough decision to make.
Well, and we don't have to make the decision necessarily. We had said in the prior meeting that until the next, um. You know, until we have clarity on the subject matter, uh, we, we will be proactive and we will basically be mindful that, um. We probably expect the, the customer to see PFAS, non-detect water discharged from the vessels, right? But we had also said if we have to go to a higher frequency, meaning higher cost of replacing the media, we will put that out to the voters.
Right. And that, that's something I wanted to mention tonight is. Should we be considering any warrant articles? But are we even, are we even going to have enough information to present the warrant articles? Because obviously. You know, the warrant article would say, would you be willing this, you know, probably going to be an increase in carrying costs? Would you? Be willing to, to vote for an increase in operational costs in order to basically get non-detect of all. Standard PFAS compounds, but I don't know that we have enough information to tell you what that. Uh, cost would be, the additional frequency of change outs.
Well, what it's.
We've already broken through with this, you know, so what's the difference between PFBA versus this new one, PFPRA, which already broke through. Months ago. So what, you know what I mean? If, if, if that's the case, how long is PFPRA going to take to break through? A month for both vessels? Three months? I don't know. What are we fighting? We can't, we can't possibly deal with that, you know?
And you're, and you've only done, you've only got those two compounds, apparently, the PF. The RA, the new one. The R A, the new one, and you've got the PFBA that's gone through. Or, or, or is, uh, it, it wasn't going through in October, it was still clean in the, in the finished water. So it was somewhere between fifty and a hundred percent of that, you know, it may be, it may be through now, I don't know. But, you know, the other compounds that, you know, you know, there's several other compounds that you detected in the raw water, you know, when we're talking about all that. Percent removals and things like that, and those haven't come through, you know, so. You've, you've got PFBA kind of. You know, halfway through the lag vessel, but the rest of those compounds are all back in the halfway through the lead vessel, you know, so you've got quite a. Lag there, where you've only got one compound coming through it, you know, six parts, seven parts, something like that.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, not to be funny, but we can only, you know, fight the devil we know, right? So, we, we know, PFBA, we have known for a while as a concern, right, so I would base my decisions right now based on PFBA. Which is still non-regulated, right, so. And, and I think, since we have other sources of PFAS, like we had said with uh, with Penachuk water, even though we're confined. And we have light at the end, end of the tunnel that we can dilute the PFBA. Concentration with the other wells that are coming back online here in February and then later in twenty twenty-two. I would vote heavily, I, I would vote clearly to say. We're gonna continue to collect data, right, so we're not really changing anything, if we have to make a decision next year. Uh, we have a little bit of a surplus right now, because we were proactive with the rate increases in preparation of all the, the costs that's, that's, that's. Over our head, right, and, and. We can still make a decision probably within the budget to, to replace the media earlier than planned. In twenty twenty-two, continue to collect data specifically on, what is it, PF P R A? And uh, and then we can prepare something towards the end of the year twenty twenty-two. That, that allows us to, to stand for the data, to, to be well informed in front of the voters, and put some warrant articles out there for twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, I, I think I'm on board with that. I, I don't wanna jump the gun on this right away and not have the. Benefit of having additional data, so that we can really pin down what the costs are. And, and try to put a hasty warrant article together, and I don't think that makes sense. But it, it's something I think, you know, we might wanna look at doing the following year, like you're saying. So I, I'm on board with that process anyways. I don't know if anybody else has any comments on that, or um, does any confusion, or anything that needs to be. Addressed or whatever, it's um, you know.
Uh, might be interesting to just see if there's anything out there on the health effects of the short chains versus the long chains. And, but in general, I think I agree with you and Wolf.
Yeah, they are um, continuously, what is the ATS D R is always updating their um. I forget what they call them, the reference doses or something like that, uh, for each compound, you know, they're, they're coming out, each compound, they're evaluating. Um, more compounds periodically, so. I don't know if PFBA has one out. I know like PFNA, which is regulated, has a um. Uh, an, an ATS D R um, evaluation and. If you look at that, they're saying PFNA can use much higher, you, you can allow much higher concentrations. I don't know if that's the case with PFBA, PF P R A, those new, you know. Short chain compounds, but that would be, that would be something that would be important, if they come out with a really low. Reference dose, that it can be harmful at low levels, that's, that's a consideration we need to look at, you know, so. Until we have those numbers, I think that's a good point, John, is, you know, that's something we gotta keep an eye out on and see what those. If it, if it seems to be very harmful at low levels, then we gotta factor that into consideration more, you know? And, and I think that would be information be pertinent to a warrant article, and I don't think we have that right now, so.
Yeah, I agree with everything you're saying.
Alright, alright, I didn't have really anything more on this, so um.
Is this information we can inquire from P and from D S?
Uh, what's that, these um?
Well, the, the advisable um. Thank you, um, you know, for those unregulated PFAS compounds.
We can, I don't know that they, I don't think they developed them on their own, I think they wait, they incorporate the ATS D R. Reference dose frequencies or whatever they call them, and. Um, obviously, they came out with the MCLs on the four regulated compounds, so. You know.
I think, I think there was data, you know, there was more data available on those compounds, you know, I know, at least when we started this, you know, three years ago or whatever. You know, there wasn't a lot of data, there wasn't much at all on short chains, you know, so I assume. That's, you know, as this, this has kind of been coming more to the forefront, I, I assume there's been more studies now, maybe starting to look at this.
Would it make sense for staff to possibly reach out to, you know, to D S and request that um, information to be, to be drawn from, from ATS D R?
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt.
We can do that.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt to give Brandon a call, I mean, he's really up on all this stuff, you know.
He is.
You know, he would be the best person around to know if, if there have been studies done, or, you know, what. What if anything has been done on these short chains?
Like, I'm wondering, speaking of Brandon, I, he's supposed to be collecting these follow-up samples, I don't remember when the target. If he even had that scheduled yet or not, but. Maybe once those additional results are available. Maybe it would be good to ask him to just sit in on one of these. Board meetings and kind of present, because I'm sure he's got a whole wealth of information that. You know, a lot of us aren't um, dealing with on a daily basis, so. Yeah, so I don't know if you wanna maybe mention, maybe, you know, find out when he's doing the sampling and then when he expects to get the results back. And, and see if he's willing to touch base and just kind of zoom in on one of our meetings, maybe out in. February or something, when he has the results back and. Maybe he can also talk to the, the, the dose references from ATS D R and where those stand. I know they just, they just uh, came out with a few more compounds probably a month ago. Um, and I know Lorene Allen is keeping tabs on all of this too, so. I just don't remember the details on which compounds, uh, the ATS D R added to their. Their repertoire, but there are some additional PFAS compounds that are coming out with. Um, you know, help those frequencies and things like that.
Are we making this another action item?
Yeah.
To inquire about the ATS D R guidelines. Thank you.
Alright, so um. I think that kind of brings us to um. Item number four, I don't know if, and that's uh, to discuss the chlorine uh, complaints, I don't know if maybe um. Underwood, do you feel that you have some input on that possibly um? Not sure if you wanna stick around, see how, maybe if it's only another five, ten minute conversation.
I wouldn't mind listening to what you, what you have on that.
Okay.
I don't think we have any data, did, did you provide data to us to be looking at?
Uh, there's a thing in the board packet here, and let me see if I can uh. If I can find this.
We can forward the email.
Yeah, right here. You guys see that, the table? So it looks like this is the table of, um, like, distribution system. Residuals, chlorine residuals.
Yeah, so once we uh, opened up the valve and opened up the Penachuk interconnect on the twentieth. We started doing uh, uh, more frequent um, residual checks out in the system. So you can actually see from, you know, the last, October fourteenth. To uh, November fir, November first. Some, they weren't that bad, but then they start climbing. As we move, go forward, uh, you know. More into November and December, they did start climbing a little bit. Um, I know this, this came, uh, Wolf had wanted this on the agenda because of the, some of the chlorine complaints out. I guess that he's been fielding on. Facebook? Is that correct?
Free time.
Yeah, and all that free time you have.
So, I was, I had a question about that chart, so, first of all, there's no units on there, so I'm not sure what we're looking at, and then when I look at monthly average, there's two lines. Is the one a total of the above or something, and the other one is an average, or what are we looking at?
It might be like the summation before it's divided by the number to get the.
Yeah, and I, I had a comment here that. I think, I'm guessing this is an addition of these numbers, and then it's just dividing, it's calculating an average, I think. I think a couple of these numbers were dividing by thirteen and, or twelve, let me see here. Some columns divided by thirteen should be divided by twelve, meaning some values would be higher than reported here on the average, but. It definitely looks like there's an increase in the average concentration of chlorine on here. And I don't know if that is just because of the time of year where, you know, the temperatures are colder. Um, or it's, we started buying water from Penachuk, so. Oh yeah, the question I, the one question I have is um. Do we have a sample tap in the booster pump interconnect at Penachuk? That we could sample?
We do, I can actually incorporate that in here, so we know. I wanna say, we. Yeah, that is not on here, um, I believe we were getting a. A one point zero. For reading at the, can, interconnection. I know there um. I did talk to Chris County. And they were, so, right after I. Was notified that we were, we were getting some complaints, I did call Chris again, and they've been getting, they were getting complaints as well. So the day that I had talked to him, I talked, actually talked to him on the fourteenth. They're. Pumping into the system, uh, the. At one, or, yeah, one point uh. Zero into the system. That's what they shoot for, and I know, I, I don't have what they were getting, but they were getting complaints, and he was actually. Dialing it back down to try to alleviate some of the complaints that he was getting as well. He believes that it's, they, it's not uncommon, he does get these complaints, and it's more so in the winter time, so I don't. He doesn't know if it's due to the colder water, if it's the uh, uh, turnover or, or in the. Pond or, or what, but. He does notice the chlorine complaints more in the winter time.
Right, so I think they're using all river water now, if I'm not mistaken, so I don't know if he'd get.
I don't know, Don, I'm, I'm really confused, because you talked to some and they say it's pond, and I believe it's all river as well, but.
Right, but these numbers are kind of high, I don't know, John, if you have a um, experience with chlorine residuals, the, you know. What, what is it, anything around, definitely you can taste over one point oh or something? And um.
People that could speak to that subject.
What's that?
I employ people that could speak to that subject.
Yeah, right.
But I don't remember off the top of my head what the max is, but. Um, but yeah, one sounds about average to me.
Yeah, that's a number that sticks in my head, just working with small operators on small water systems that I work on, and it, it's, it's. You know, they wanna have enough residual in there to kill any bacteria, but then if there's too much, you get taste complaints and odor complaints, so. There's sort of a fine line in there, and I, I think it's, I think you wanna try and keep it below one point oh, so that you don't have. Uh, odor and, and taste complaints, but if your residual's too low, there, there should be like a number in here. That you need to kill off the bacteria, any bacteria in there, and that's like a four log calculation. I've done them for small water systems before. So there's a certain level of residual you need to maintain, but there's a certain number you don't wanna go over either. But the, the reason I'm just asking about the Penachuk interconnect is if we took a sample right from there, we'd know exactly what they're feeding us, right, so.
And I believe we have, Don, and. But it's not on this chart, so I apologize for that, I know we did originally take readings from there, because I did ask. Steve to, to let me know what was coming in and what we were getting out of the system, so that.
It makes sense, it would make sense to just send this chart off to Chris and say, you know, if, if this is helpful information as you're trying to work on your dosage, he said he was working on it, right? So, he's kind of aware of the problem.
Right, yeah.
What is the unit of all of these numbers?
This is probably milligrams per liter.
Yes.
Okay, I would like to see that in the future, because we know how many times the units have caused confusion when we talk about parts per trillion and. All that, so. Okay.
If, if you have a chance, Ron, if you wanna update this graph and um, add in the um. The booster connection, the Penachuk booster pump connection, if you have any data to fill in back on that. And then, and then take a look at these numbers here, I think there's a couple of these numbers where, in some cases, like, you're dividing by um. You're, you're including a, a number in here that wasn't measured, right, this, this, the, the dash in here doesn't mean the residual was zero that day, it just means it wasn't. Sampled. And there's, you can use the average function in the spreadsheet instead of summing them up and stuff, but.
But I mean, if we're talking about water complaints, we're talking about particular residences, aren't the numbers individually more important than the average?
That's true. At least this tells us if it's happening throughout the whole system, and it looks like it's definitely a progressive increase, though, you know what I mean? I guess from that perspective, it's.
It's looking at every line, you can see significant differences from October to December, for sure.
October, October was MVD water, and you started buying water from Penachuk October twentieth. So, you know, you're really, the last four columns are all Penachuk, and, right? Except for any stamp, and again, I don't know where, exactly where all these locations are, but, you know, anything that's not near. You know, well, four and five would pretty much be all Penachuk water, right?
Right, so um. Where was I, just look at here, Society Hill, that's up, that's up probably under the influence mostly of Wells four and five.
What about Parker Drive?
Uh, Parker Drive, that's on the uh, is that the um? That's the high pressure zone?
Yes.
Yeah, well, then that, that makes sense, because that's all, the probably older water, yeah.
Yeah, so you, you do have the Turkey Hill booster in here.
Yep.
Yep.
And that doesn't seem to be that elevated. You know?
You know, that's probably more of a blend. Of the two.
Right. So it's kind of like hitting a moving target, you know, but uh.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you look at Tinker Road and Continental Bowl, our Tinker Road's pretty down, pretty close to where we're pulling in from uh.
From Penachuk.
Chuck, and that's some of the higher numbers, so.
Yeah, yeah. But I'm kind of, this is kind of funny here, because even Society Hill, which is uh, that's, that's kind of over in the northeast part of town there, right?
Yeah.
So you're still getting these high numbers up there, which is, wouldn't have expected that to be the case. But anyway.
But that's a little more consistent, though, of numbers compared to some of the other ones that are climbing a lot more.
Right, right, yeah, I mean, if this trend, you know, continues, we're gonna be up, you know, an average is gonna be consistently over one point oh. And you're probably gonna have taste and odor complaints in the whole distribution system, so. But, what if they, you know, if, if a lot of this is coming from Penachuk, and if they started dialing it down, hopefully, we're gonna see some better numbers and. Future sampling results. But um, yeah, I, I agree, you should probably send this over to um, Penachuk and just say, hey, this is what we're getting, and. You know, if you guys wanna keep, monitor on their end, make sure they're not serving it too high, coming into us.
Right, and I was gonna ask, Wolf, when you. When you see the, the complaints on uh, on Facebook, could you? And you may be doing it, um, if they could, if you could suggest they call us, because we could actually go out and get a reading at their homes too.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't think we're getting too many of those calls.
See, we got a lot of voicemails to go through still.
Oh, good point.
If there's a way we could note on here, which of these sample locations are in the high, high service district and which are in the low, in the low zone?
Can do that as well.
Because if you think about all the water that goes in the high service area, it all goes through the Turkey Hill booster pump, so. Technically, all that water should be uniform. Until it decays out into the extremes of that high pressure zone, you know? So that, that would probably be another good thing, just to note each one of these locations, whether it's in the high or the low pressure zone. So I guess that as far as we can report is to just say that, you know, I guess we're, we're looking into the, the source of. Where, so you know, some of these, these chlorine levels were slightly elevated. Looks like it's probably coming from Penachuk because it sounds like they had the same issue on their, on their end.
Right, and, and we, we're typically around point, uh, point eight. That we, that we uh. Put out as a system. If you remember, we were actually a little bit higher. Before we had four and five come online because we were trying to go to the edge of the system. Essentially, we're, all of our wells are pushing to the, to the north.
Right.
So we've actually, well, it's just four and five now, but typically we're right around a point eight that we, that we put out into the system to maintain that uh. You know, point two zero out in the system at the furthest point, so. I mean, we could, if we need to, we can probably drop ours a little bit, but I mean, we're still going to get. Um, if Penachuk, I know they're working on it, but if we're, you know. If they're still having the issues, we're, it kind of defeats the purpose. If we drop ours, we're still going to get that high level, so. Yeah.
All right. I think um, I'll stop sharing now. It's like ten here. Let me see what's going on here. Why I can't. Hold on here. Oh, here we go. All right. All right, good. So um, we ready to move on unless anyone has any other questions about any of these? Seeing none, I guess um, we could move on to the next thing, which is to discuss the planning board meeting and um. I don't know if um, if Underwood, if you need to be on.
Yo.
This one. Think so.
Yeah, planning board doesn't everything to do with us, does it?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay. All right then, have a good night.
Have a good holiday.
Yeah, you too.
Peter, I love it.
Thanks. All right, so the planning board meeting that was on uh, December seventh, I believe, related to the capital. Improvement plan. Let's see here. I didn't know if you just had a, a summary or anything for us, Ron, or um. All right.
I, I thought it went well. I did. Present to the, the planning board, kind of went through the projects. Um, they did make, you know, there were some comments about some things not being uh. Capital uh. Purchases being, it probably shouldn't be within the uh. CIP. I mean, we've always included them in just as a. Have a place order and so things wouldn't be forgotten. During the budget process, but we can certainly. Rework if the, if the board wants to um. It was a pretty uh, I don't say it was quick. Um, I know they did their uh. Recommendations that I believe at the end of the meeting, they went back. Um, there was a pretty full agenda that night. One thing I did include, because I know there's been some questions regarding. How we relate to the planning board as far as. Authority from the planning board. And I did include that into your, actually I sent it along afterwards. It wasn't available when the, the packets went out, so I believe. I think everybody may have gotten them.
It's an email with um, Carrie's recommendation from Drummond Woodson.
Yeah.
We probably want to discuss that memo. Probably in a different meeting, I think.
Yep. I don't know how in depth you, I mean, like I said, I. Went on the seventh, talked to the, uh, you know, presented this to the planning board. Went line for line. Down, uh, down through the CIP and uh. You know, and, and they put their recommendations on uh, at the end. So um.
Yeah, so it looks like they're looking at all the urgent things being, you know, related to new source development, whether it's land purchase and new well site development. They, they assign an urgent to those categories. Um, I did happen to catch the replay of that particular um, time of the planning board meeting. And I know there were a lot of questions on some of these items, shouldn't, they, they felt shouldn't be even capital improvement items and. Some question about some of the numbers not adding up or something somewhere on here, which I'm not really sure.
So one of the things that I had. And I guess it's something that, that we need to talk about is, you know, as a board. I, when you, when you. Total up the column. The asset management target contribution. Were included in those totals. So I did subtract them out.
The grants were?
No, so like uh, distribution system improvements, annual funding, just to, to support CIP. The bottom two rows. I mean, if you look at the column, I like for, for twenty twenty-three, down the bottom, it says five hundred thousand and a hundred forty thousand. Those are our target numbers for uh, annual contributions into the CIP pro uh. Into capital reserves to support the CIP.
We've always had. Right here, Ron?
Yes.
It's further up, Don, when you, when you go.
Talking about up here, right?
Right, right above the seventy-five thousand. Go further down.
Um, yep.
With your mouse. Yep, right there.
Yes. Those are annual targets. For uh, capital to, uh, yeah, deposited capital reserves.
Right.
I did, so I, I actually took, they've always been added in and I've. And I've never really understood why they needed to be, because I think it's, it's um. When you come up with a total for your, your uh. Capital improvements. It, it was at, I guess it's a false. Inflates the numbers. I, I, I took them out and I left it at, you know, whatever the total was, it was seventy-five thousand. On twenty twenty-three. And I just left them kind of. The contribution separate. I can total them back in if that's what the board wants. I just, it, it seemed like it should be separate to me.
So the contributions are something that we were, we're putting money aside for, which um, that, which would go towards the total project cost, which is what you want there, listed on there. It's a total project cost. And then to show what contributions we're planning on having prepared is that amount. On that line item, right?
Well, that's our target, yes, target contribution to capital reserves.
So that's money that's already going towards the project, so you're really.
That's what we're hoping to, to. Put away, yes. It just seems like it should be separate. So I think that was one thing that was throwing, throwing them off a little bit because then. As I got further down, and when there was. Little, there wasn't much into the uh, under the CIP. I kind of left them in just because it was going to put the lines at zero. So I, I. Probably should have just taken them, taken them off or left them on one, you know, either way, I, but I.
Yeah, I guess that's probably where the confusion was. I guess, I don't know if you can see where I'm pointing at here, but for twenty-two, the nine hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred. If that's the total of all of this column above it. And then this one obviously isn't, but then these are, these are again.
Yep.
I guess you're just saying in the, in the next fiscal year, you're taking, you're backing out these. Target contributions or something?
So I, I backed them out up to, I think it was twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, because if you look at what uh, twenty twenty-six. Is to be determined, to be determined. Kind of down the line, we really haven't put any values in there, other than the five hundred thousand and the one forty.
Yeah.
The total is six forty, so. Just.
Why don't we have those being just a separate table? They're maintained alive, but pull it out of this table and just make it a new section on the sheet. Because they're not really part of, of, of a capital investment. I agree with that.
I'm almost, now that I'm looking at it, I'm wondering if we could drop those down to the target source of funds. And then maybe keep it below that. Or maybe it's a separate, like you said.
I would keep it all separate together, all, altogether separate. And at the same time, I would, I would thin out that sheet, you know, with the completed projects, for example. I don't know. It just seems this, the sheet has a lot of information that is not really. Important for the planning board, let alone for the future, right? Completed projects are over. They're part of the operating budget now.
Yeah, it's, it's before, you know, it's before twenty twenty-one, all of these completed projects. So we're only looking forward. Yeah, I know what you mean there. That makes sense.
And again, the, the more information that's on here, the more we have to discuss and, and clarify, but it doesn't really affect anything as far as the planning board.
No, and I, I agree. I think we, we had put it on there because this actually gets put into the um, annual report and stuff, so. We were trying to, and maybe we can do this on another, something else within the, in a report, but just to kind of show.
Where the money's going.
Yeah, that we, we actually do follow the, the CIP. We've, we've got a list of, you know, completed projects and. Um, but yeah, we could probably put that somewhere else.
Right.
Not only that, but um. Just according to the RSA that makes us have to go to the planning board with the CIP, we don't need to tell them anything that is under a hundred thousand dollars. That's just coming right out of um, the description of what is a capital investment, I think they call it in the RSA. Capital expenditure, sorry. Anything with an associated cost of a hundred thousand dollars or more. So all these small ones, I would say we wouldn't have to say anything about at all.
Yeah, I, I just, I remember, you know, when we talked, we actually briefly talked about this at our November meeting. And I, I had a feeling that I didn't have a good handle on it and I wouldn't have been able to explain all of this. So I kind of didn't feel like I wanted to go to the meeting because I would, I probably would have just said things that were wrong anyway, but. Um, it just got the sense that I think we need to give this a little more attention. You know, they seem to um, have some comments, the planning board had some comments on it. So it's probably good that, that's probably why we're talking about it now to try and, you know, clean some of these up. But probably it's a good idea, like Wolf said, if you want to just pull these target contribution line items out of that table. You know, maybe that'll be helpful. All right. Any other um, comments or questions on this particular agenda item?
Well, and maybe in the interest of keeping it all together, which I think is what Ron wanted to achieve, so we have it available for the rate study. We could just, you know, segregate it into different columns. I'm sorry, into different tables, the, the top one being the one with investments over a hundred thousand dollars. So we, you know, we have it available for the planning board, the ones underneath that um, that are not really subject to the capital improvement plan, but. Kind of want to have them here because they're important for the rate studies. Even the completed projects, if it's information we want to track, why not put it on there, but maybe not. Included then in the final version for the planning board, just to keep things so easy to, to grasp and, and, and short. Keep it efficient. Yep. I guess what I'm trying to say, if you want it on there, you know, I don't think anybody has a problem with that. But maybe segregated, so it doesn't affect anything that the planning board is review for their, for their entertainment.
Okay. Paul, any other observations that you noticed of, of being on the planning board at all?
No, I, just to, it's not that the planning board has any. Let's say authority over us. It's, I mean, planning board doesn't have any authority over the library either, but they have to come to us with a CIP as well. So I want to say it's the town, it's the library, the water district. I think the school board has to as well, and I may be forgetting one. It's literally just. To try to coordinate all town capital investments. There's no like authority that's being given. It's just since all. Like uh, building permit, stuff like that, like large investments in the town, apartment buildings come through us. We just try to coordinate what's important, what's not important and give an opinion. That's literally all it is.
Yeah. I know I was confused because then when I watched the replay, one of the members at one point said something about. You know, they're here in front of us asking us to approve this and blah, blah, blah. And I was like.
Yeah, no, it was, he, he, he may have misspoken, but there's no um. I mean, the town one went right before Ron did. There was no approval. It's just, this is important. We've been trying to do this for a while. This is a little more important than this, so on and so.
Well, it's always good to share information and see if that affects something else that's going on and. All right, um, there's no more questions here. I'll. Uh, we could probably move on to the uh. Next item. We're good with that, everybody? Which is um. Looks like the minutes. Uh, so here to review and approve the minutes, we'll start with um, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one first. Let's see.
Motion to approve?
All right. Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Paul. Anybody have any um, corrections or? Anything to offer?
I'll just make a comment quick. I think the last sentence on page three line item. This is kind of awkward numbering. The zeros in the middle of the page. I don't know if that's the same for you guys.
Oh yeah, probably.
It only goes high of ten.
Yeah, it looks like um, if I didn't have these, these minutes in front of me when I was away, so I just forwarded on um. Amanda's and for some reason when I get it, it's actually cuts off the other. First digit. One, two, three, and then when it gets to nine, it's supposed to over to the left. It should be a ten, eleven, twelve. It cuts off that left hand column. So I, anyways, I, that's. Oh, that'll be gone when I prove it anyways.
Yeah, no problem. So at, at the end of the edited text here, which is then this, hang on a sec. The third. Group of one, two, threes, right? And it starts at thirty-three. You know what I mean? Like, uh, item three, um, vice chairman, Beaufort, asked about um. A W one hundred, uh, asked how long in advance can water be pumped? There's a little bit of a link missing there between what was said and what was said prior, but I, I have no problem with that. Um, this was about the, the usage of the Parker tank. Right? And, and. You know, I, I have no problem. I don't think we need to make a change to the minutes with it, but it's a little bit awkward on how it, there's like a. A link missing between the paragraph prior and that comment about the. Uh, tank and any bacteria levels, so just want to point that out.
Okay, so there's no change?
No, I'm fine with how it is. It's just a little bumpy, but I can live with that.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second. Um, so want to go ahead and vote on that. We'll do a roll call. Uh, Wolf, how do you vote?
In favor.
Uh, Paul?
I vote I.
John?
Hey.
Myself, I as well. So uh, the minutes of October eighteen. Myself, I as well, so uh the minutes of October eighteenth, twenty twenty one are approved as written. Looks like the next one is uh. Where are we?
November fifteenth, is it? I skipped one.
It's November tenth.
Yeah, I'm getting there.
Two copies in here, do you have two copies?
I have ten, November tenth and fifteenth.
I have two of the ten.
Remember ten?
Oh, mine.
I make a motion to approve that too, but I wanted to go on record that this is. The first meeting that the chair of the board missed, and I kind of want to make that known. Shameful.
You should have said first and only. Would have been a little more meaningful.
I don't want to be, don't want to be too smoothie, shame on you.
Hey, three and a half years, it had to be a record, it has to be.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of.
So motion to, motion to approve, to approve.
Wait here, second on those, November, is it the tenth? November tenth?
Yes, you know them. I see November fifteenth, I don't see the tenth.
Yeah.
That's actually after the fifteenth in the packet, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought I skipped it too, but it is after it.
Sorry, we're trying to put packages, packets together this time remotely.
That's okay. There's no, there's no complaints coming.
All right, so we looking at the fifteenth or the tenth, what do you guys want to do?
Well, since I made a joke about your attendance, let's, let's finish November tenth.
The tenth, okay.
That's the one you were absent. So a motion to approve minutes of November tenth.
Right.
Uh can we approve those?
Can we not?
If you only have two yay votes, if both myself and Don were absent.
Well, my understanding, my understanding is that we could still vote to approve the minutes, even though you're not there.
I mean, yeah, because it was a valid meeting, it was an emergency meeting. So. We had three, we had, we had me as uh presiding over it, we had John and we had Ken.
I am.
We.
We only got two of you there right now, only you and John.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, you're right, okay.
What?
About that.
I still thought Kerry said you can vote to approve minutes, even though you weren't.
I don't know if it's different here, I'm pretty sure Kerry said that too, but on the planning board, it doesn't, if you read the minutes, you can approve them, you don't have to have been there.
Right? So we don't know if Ken has any edits, but I'm guessing probably not, I don't know. I, I'd say let's go ahead and um approve them, you know, I'm willing to vote on them, even though I wasn't there, I don't know.
I can vote on them, I just know in the past on this board.
We haven't done that.
Yeah.
Well, what, what do you, I mean, Wolf and John, you were there, do you guys, if you guys want to put this off until uh the next meeting when Ken's around?
That does see no harm done in putting it off, we've put it off before, so I've seen the harm done.
All right. So let's table the November tenth minutes.
Done.
I don't think we need a motion for that, right?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
All right, so then we are back to November fifteenth. Where am I here? Yeah, okay, see you though.
I'm moved to approve. November fifteen minutes with no amendments.
All right, motion by Wolf, second by John, anybody have any corrections? If none, then uh we can do a roll call, Wolf, how do you vote?
Favor?
John?
I.
Paul?
Staying.
Yeah, that's right, and myself, I, I am in favor, so that is uh. Three zero one with Paul abstaining. All right. Um what else do we have here? Just the action items now. Let's go through these again. All right, number two.
Can we limit the discussion to the one with the salt mitigation? Because the other ones we talk about, there are a lot of them ongoing, and the other ones are. You know, not immediate to work on a lot of times, so.
Right.
Yeah, Wolf um asks to limit the discussion, we really should take that very seriously.
All right, how about this, does anybody have any numbers that they want to cross off on here, or if not, then we can move on to the next item?
Um did we have anything that want to, there was something that was going to be added, right? What was that?
Inquiring about the A T S D R guidelines.
Okay.
And there was one more.
There was one more that was discussed, but then kind of nixed and never added. And um that was about, it turned into a conversation about warrant articles.
Oh.
No, there was one prior.
No, I thought it was the uh.
Did we just, yeah, didn't we just want to have Brandon Kernan come to the?
So yeah, have, have Brandon Kernan present to us the P. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Um Brandon Kernan parentheses D E S, because he's with D E S. Present results of. P F P, which are capital letters, and then smaller R, capital letter A, so P F P R A sample results. And what was the other? Um I think that was pretty much.
No, there was one more on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I got on tip my tongue, it was the um. Engineering, engineering report from uh. Lynette i- is setting up with um. The testing facility to put the.
Yes, they tap the uh. The R S S S C T.
Just.
Yes.
Wells.
And that's for Lynette to do.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
And then you put my name with it as well, so that I can follow up with Lynette, thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
And then for the A T S D R, you had mentioned Brandon Kernan's name with that one as well, do you want me to assign that to him?
Um I don't know, it should be somebody on M B D staff that's following up with him or something, or um. I don't mind doing that if you want, because I, I just kind of.
I can do it as well.
Yeah. You, you can put me down on that, I guess.
Right.
So if, if he sends the results to you, Ron, just let me know, and then, you know, so, so I'm aware that he's got the test done, do you, do you happen to know, you remember, I can't remember if he's proposed the date that he was going to.
I don't recall, that's why I was saying I could do it as well, because I need to give him a call to find out when he wants to do the next round of testing.
Yeah, that's a good point, then go ahead, why don't you do that one then? Sorry about that.
Well, it's all right.
So switch that to Ron?
Yes.
Just one letter, yeah.
All right, and uh let's see what we got here, yeah, and it's not on the agenda, but obviously the um. The news came out um from the, I think it's D H H S, higher than expected kidney and renal cancers found in Meramec. So that was on channel nine, W M U R, and um. Just, you know, something that uh hopefully they'll follow up and they, they're going to look into it further, but um. Who knows, maybe this uh PFAS initiative that we're under is for a good reason, if um we're seeing health effects occurring potentially related to it. So that's all I have to say about that one. So uh the only other thing on the agenda is uh old business.
I'm sorry, not to, not to back it up, but there was something about that story that, well, the story before that story that I didn't really understand, that I, I couldn't comprehend that. The bypass that they installed. The source. Tell me, D E S never like investigated the system before they improved it, that doesn't seem like something that falls through the cracks, you know what I'm talking about?
I do, there is an omission of a uh supposedly there's a bypass stack that is not filtered for.
Yeah.
Like. Safety reasons for, I don't really understand, but if the, the filtered stacks fail or can't emit, and they.
You need to be able to release stuff, but what I'm saying is that. D E S didn't go to the site and look at the system, they just looked at paperwork submitted, that's what I'm not really getting.
Apparently, I, I think I saw correspondence that. Saint Obain claims it was on the plans all the time, all along. But the latest thing, the latest thing I'm aware of is that it's been referred to um the Attorney General, so. I'm sure they're continuing to look into it, but it's certainly important and deserves to be mentioned here, obviously.
Absolutely, I just find it insane that nobody went out and looked, looked at it, they just.
And it was, there was certainly no mention of it anywhere, as I'm sure, right? No, and the, the, the word bypass stack, I'd never heard before.
I don't ever recall that coming up either.
No. So it's, you know, curious why it wasn't mentioned by either party, the applicant or the reviewer.
Yeah.
There it is.
Uh yeah, not uh. There you go.
Exactly. All right, uh does anybody else have, I guess, I, I just had a few things that, that the status of the, the uh P U C application, so that rate has been approved, that sixty seven cents?
Yes, and then, so the only thing that they're voting on next, but which they requested was the um special contract.
Okay.
That's, we haven't heard anything on that yet, I, I guess as far as status, where that's at, but.
Kind of Chuck's attorney is dealing with it.
Okay. And then we had discussed originally, there was some talk with D E S about having grants opportunities for some of the costs that we're incurring. Um and I don't know when or who needs to look into that, and what point.
We're already doing that, and we've got, there's um source water protection grants that we're doing for the signage, we're um still waiting for. Uh remediation loan fund to see if we can consolidate, but we did get, I don't, I don't want to be quoted on this, because we just got a denial letter for artificial recharge and. Was the other thing, it was two, two things that really don't fall into a um a necessary project for them, it wasn't ranked high enough, so it's going to be excluded out of the application. But honestly, I, I don't have the details in my head right now, but um. The PFAS remediation loan fund, drinking water groundwater trust fund, they're all sending off emails where we've been looking at, we qualify for some, we don't qualify for others. Um some are for small systems, so we've been looking at everything that comes through.
Yeah, I was referring mostly specifically to the reimbursement, buying water from Penetech, because I know. They had mentioned to us at the very first meeting that there were grants available that could offset our costs on, on paying that.
We've gone back, we've talked to Kerry about all this, and it's that we're not, because the water that we're purchasing is not. Causing us any financial stress or damage, because we're actually purchasing it for lower than we would make it, there's no damages to be sought, because there's. There's nothing to reimburse for, it's something that we're saving money and not buying, and not making water, but we're buying water, there's a kind of a wash there, so she said we can't prove damages.
You know, and, and I, I objected to that statement before, because we have running costs we can't just stop paying, right? We have debt services, we have operational service, we have labor, we have insurances, we have uh, we have all kinds of things that we need to be paying, that we can't stop paying just because we're buying that water instead. So um we may produce the water more expensive than this emergency rate, but we're not saving. The, the same amount of money by buying that water.
I don't follow.
Well, we have an equip, we have an existing infrastructure, we have existing contracts that we need to honor, insurances, all kinds of things that are fixed cost. We have, we have staff we need to pay, we have, we have, we have uh um, you know, the, the distribution uh system to maintain and, and, and. Uh and operate, and in, in the process, we incur cost, that cost is part of our production cost of our own produced water. A good deal of that cost exists just because we shut off the pumps and we don't have electricity. Um uh you know, that we need to, we don't, we don't, we, we were saving the cost for the electricity to run those pumps. I don't, and maybe some chemicals, but other than that, we're not really saving a whole lot of cost, that fixed cost to operate the system. And to maintain those assets and, and pay those insurances continues to be, to need to be paid. So when we buy water, that is extra expenditure. Absolutely extra expenditure.
I mean, I could have Kerry um jump on um.
Well, I told her that before. Yeah, I told her that in an email.
Yeah, can I add to that point, Wolf? I think, you know, you're right, and, but we don't know the numbers, so. I assume Michelle came up with the cost of, of what it costs us to make the water, right?
I don't know, we haven't, I've never heard that.
We, it was under, we kind of threw some numbers out there, and we just started getting some, so we've got two months worth of bills, I can actually crunch some numbers with Michelle. And kind of get a better idea of what we're, we're looking at as far as electricity savings, it would be chemical savings and electricity savings really is what we're looking at.
But. Go ahead. I was just going to say, all you need to do is figure out what your variable portion of the cost is. And how much of that variable portion you're going to save, because we're still running four and five. And compare that to what we're paying, and see if there is an additional cost there, if there's not.
Put it, put it in other perspective, we are now running a whole water district just to get water out of four and five. The only thing we're saving is chemicals and electricity for two, three, seven, and eight, right? All the other fixed costs needs now to be, needs now absorbed by the water that we are producing on our own involves four and five, right? And now we're buying water from Penetech instead, which is going on top of the expenditures we already have. So now you could argue that um we can compare. You know, how, what portion of the water that we buy? Now it gets complicated. I'm hard to put it into words, but again, the fixed cost that we have is out there, the only savings we really have is chemicals and electricity. So we can calculate those savings and they may, maybe reduction of the, the, the price of, of, of producing water. But we still have the expenditure of buying water from Penetech. So we can deduct the savings possibly from the water that we buy from Penetech, but the other, the rest of that is still, and it does some expense.
Yeah, I, I think we got to look at this closer, and as we get more information, then we're going to know more, more about it. Um are those, are those bills from Penetech? Those are the full price, they haven't credited us back the P U C price yet.
The first bill that came out was the full price, but then actually, I ju, we adjusted it, and then we actually just paid the, you know, for the sixty seven cents. And then, and then the um. The ten twenty nine bill to the eleven twenty nine bill. Was adjusted to sixty seven cents for a rate.
So. I'm out of power, I'll be right back, guys, if I lose you.
All right.
So. Should we? Send a letter of appreciation to the P O C for expediting this decision?
And she's no longer there, the one that expedited it.
She retired.
Yeah.
Right, but the commission as a whole, I mean, they did us a huge favor in, in, in expediting the decision altogether, just a question, it's up to you guys.
They expedited it for kind of, kind of expedited for Penetech, because it really is, we don't really know them.
And maybe these are thanks to Penetech, so, so anyways.
I, I don't really feel like one strong in one way or the other, to be honest, I don't know. All right, anyways, um. Any other ideas on, on either sending a letter, P U C, or? Just revisiting this at some point in the future, I don't know if we want to make an action item on that, or if that's something that's just going to happen. Probably anyways, at some point. I just, I think it's important, if, if we have some money due to us that was alluded to as being grant money available. I just, I think it's important if, if we have some money due to us that was alluded to as being grant money available. And we are spending more money than we otherwise would. I'd like to, I think it's, it's our duty to try and get recouped on that, you know?
Absolutely. And now that I, we've got some bills behind us, we can actually crunch those numbers. Let's see where we're at. And I mean, we, we were going to be looking, I mean, I, we were looking at. Oh, there was some leftover money from the town on the.
ARPA funding.
Thank you, I, for getting all these, the ARPA funds. And I did push that off to Kerry to ask if that was something that we could utilize in, she didn't think it was.
Not for Penachuk.
Yeah, we couldn't use it for that. It had to be a, an actual water project. So. That would now would be back to looking at some grants again, if we're actually have some damages there. So.
Right. And we're going to know more how much, you know, how much this is costing us is, as the months go by and we incur more bills.
So I can give you the last two, 10, six to 1029, it was 8,000. 8,189,000 and 3 cents. And then 1029 to 1129, it was 21,83922.
So about $29,000 or $30,000 so far on those.
Far, yeah.
And that's on the 67 cent rate?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the one thing that we never. And we actually brought this to Kerry as well. There's a six inch meter charge that's included in that. At $1,000, 1,235. A Penachuk water recoupment fee of 33543. And a weight case, yeah, weight case, a rate case expense for 2020 at, at. 50 cents? Not that it's a lot of money, but it was, it's over and above what we're using.
I got an email back from Terry, Kerry on that.
You did?
Yeah, but I didn't go through it yet. I wasn't prepared for that.
So that was, those are the fixed charges that were never mentioned when we were. Talking with Penachuk that we're actually paying those. The additional. Yeah, 1,500 bucks.
Well, it sounds like you got some information from her and then may, maybe this is something we might want to put on as an agenda item for the next month, just to kind of.
Yeah.
Where we are at. All right. So let's see, I think. Yeah. And then the only other thing I wanted to ask about is the. The low salt or no salt signage. Again, before, you know, we approve anything, I'd like to see a map of what the signs. Maybe a picture of what the sign is going to look like and what sign is going to be used. I did see, I think it says no salt area on Continental. Heading towards. Industrial Drive. And I don't know if that sign's been there. It must have, because we didn't put any new ones out, right?
No, we haven't.
It was several years ago that they put out the no salt one. That was actually with Jim McSweeney, when we did the first go around, and this was going to be the no salt route. But I don't know if, I don't know if it's the same sign or if it was missing for a while or anything, but I, I know that there's a portion of it that's no salt.
Yeah, as if you're, if you're heading towards industrial drive on Continental Boulevard. Right on the right says the no salt area, and I don't remember seeing that before, but it struck me because I was like. If that sign was there, the DOT, that's, that's where it gets really dumped big time salt right there. So. They were blatantly driving right by the sign, salting their, salting the road where it says no salt. You know, if that sign was there, that's why I wasn't sure if it was there or not, because I saw that and I thought. There's no way the sign could have been there if they've been putting so much salt down, but I don't know.
I almost want to say it's been there. Wow, but I can't say that for sure.
Yeah. All right. So that, that's, that's, that's all I had. I don't know if this, that was old business. I don't know if there's any new business anybody wants to bring out, or if anybody had, sorry, everybody else has any old business first. If not, then we can move on to new business. Anybody have any new business? And if not, we can go to superintendent's report.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. I didn't know if the board is aware, Mike Metcalf is retiring from Underwood Engineers this month. Um, he's, you know, just from the write-up that was in the, the.
New England Water Works.
Thank you. Yeah, he was, he's been in, in the business for 42 years in the last 17 with Underwood Engineers.
Right.
But he's retired.
Nice write-up.
It was. And then my other thing is.
I love a guy, by the way.
He, yes, very nice guy.
Yeah, I'm gonna miss working with him.
Right.
John, John Lombardo from Evoque is coming down on the, well, we're getting the delivery the 10th. And we're doing training on the. From Evoque on the 12th, January 12th. So that carbon is coming in on the 10th and it's going to be in the filters and. We're going to get some, some trainings coming up as well, so.
Good. All right. That's it. Anything else? Uh, then the next thing is questions from the press and public. I don't know if we see anybody else on the line.
There was somebody on the line a couple of minutes ago, but the person's gone off.
Okay.
Well, you better, that's my left hand up. I'm going to be all over the place.
Attendees.
All right.
Nope, no attendees.
All right. Good. Then I guess we're entertain a motion to adjourn. I will say the next regular scheduled meeting is January 24th.
So moved?
Seconded.
All right. So do roll call. All those in favor of adjourning? Wolf?
In favor.
Paul?
I vote I.
And myself as well. So that's three, zero, zero, and you can probably let the record show that. Uh, John Lyon sent me a text about 10 minutes ago and said his. Apparently his laptop battery died, so he had to leave the meeting. But luckily, we still got a quorum. Otherwise, we'd have to keep this meeting going forever.
Till eternity.
All right, three, zero, zero. The meeting is adjourned and have a good holiday, everybody.
Thank you, you too.
We'll catch you at the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you.